We'll call this meeting on the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got a packed agenda tonight, so I'm gonna move right along and we're gonna forego the reading of the mission statement and we will move down to the next item with action as public input. I'd remind everybody you have five minutes to speak. If you're looking at me, I'll give you a one-minute warning, address your comments to the council, and the first person up is Sherri Clemens, reference to biking plan.
Thank you, Andrew. So my name is Sherri Clemens, and I'm here tonight because we have heard the draft of the biking plan, and I wanted to come in and make a few comments on that. First thing I want to say is that we realize that it is a draft, but a lot of work has been put into it. I think for what they've done, looking at current biking as it is in our community, and some of the needs for safety, they've done an excellent job. It's very thorough, it covers a lot of things with do with lanes, things that would be really wonderful in terms of safety with current biking. Therefore, I would say I would like to see it pass as it is, even in the draft stage, I think it's excellent. However, having said that, I hate to think that that's all that we're going to do. I like to see that being a first step because what it does not do is promote biking in our community, try to get more people biking in our community. To me, the primary thing for biking, my main concern is children, really, the health of children, and so I think that there's a lot of disappointment with the plan, and I don't think that the plan in of itself should be a disappointment, I just think that it should only be considered a step as opposed to a final biking plan for Silver City. There seems to be a tendency to consider this a plan just to deal with a small group of the town, the bikers, just one little element, but it's really not about the people who are out there biking right now. It's about a community plan and the future of our community and how our community looks. It's just like when you look at how you do your schools, how you do your parks, how you do your walking paths, anything to do with your community, it's an overall plan, and we cannot see it as just dealing with the people who are currently biking on the streets, we need to see it as encouraging our community to improve. You're gonna look around the country and see small towns just like ours, large cities, doing amazing things with bike paths. There's a reason they're doing it, they're not putting money into it just to appease a few people who bike in their communities, they're doing it because they can see that it gives back more than they give to build it. The economics of it, what it does in terms of drawing tourism to a community, what it does in terms of drawing workers to a community, small towns always have to compete to get people, especially in the healthcare industry, teaching, et cetera, to come and stay. I go through doctors like crazy here because every time I get a doctor I love, they quit, they move on, they move to another community, and it's not always about more money. We need to do things with our community to make people want to come here, stay here, live here, and see it as a community, not just a little town. They want it, I want it to be Silver City, boy, that's a really neat place, you ought to see some of the things they have there for the people, it would be a nice place to live, it would be a nice place to retire. We want to draw people who are families, and we want to drive retirees if we want a healthy community, we can't have a healthy community if we stagnate, and you need to have things in your community that draw that, and we need to be able to compete with the other towns that are doing things along these lines that make their community really attractive. Just to go over a couple of the benefits, the health is really obvious, when you start getting into people walking and biking and encouraging them to do that, the health benefits are just there. I have a doctor friend who wanted me to make the point that she sees so many kids in this town who have health issues, and it's due to lack of exercise, and she has a real concern about it, and she would like to see more activities out there, more encouragement of kids walking, biking outdoors in our community instead of on the television or on their machines, which they tend to do now. So the health is obvious. The economics, it should be obvious, it attracts tourism. When I go to another town, just this last weekend I was in Tucson, and I stayed at a place that we'd not stayed before. I won't go back to that place because the place I stay usually has wonderful biking and walking paths, so I'll go back to the other one now. When people come to your community, the reason they return is because they found amenities that they were attracted to, drawn to. One of the things we have in Silver here, we don't have skiing, we can't compete with that, we don't have lakes, but we have year-round beautiful weather, we have the forest, we have things that should draw people outdoors, and we should make the most of that. Also, if you have health improvement, of course, that helps with your economy because the better, healthier community is, the less health costs you have. Other benefits, safety, obvious, you have less accidents, possibly less deaths when you draw people off of bike paths. I just saw a study where if you go from no bike lanes to bike lanes, you reduce the safety hazards quite a bit, but if you go to bike paths, it's one-ninth as much of a safety hazard as if you don't have them. So we're talking about people's safety, and that's worth, that's priceless, our children's safety is priceless, a person biking, walking, getting hit and killed is a priceless thing. Thank you.
Next up is Jamie Thompson.
Hello, my name's Jamie Thompson, I live on Georgia Street. I want to talk also about the Bicycle Route Master Plan. I'm not gonna talk about any of the details of it, that'll come later in later discussions when it's actually an agenda item, however, I would like to talk about the process in which this thing has evolved. Last Tuesday, we saw, we looked at the presentation for the draft plan at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, and one of the things that came up there was that, and one of the things, we had given quite a bit of comments to the draft plan, and what happened is, is that while we were listening to this, that we were told that a lot of our comments were irrelevant because the council had directed community development to restrict the master plan discussion to only existing roads, and that's created a really contradictory document. And they said it was the council, and when I did the math, it was kind of shock, because when I do the math, that means that that's when I was on council, and I don't remember doing that, I would never do something like that. I've spent quite a bit of time with master plans, master route plans, in other communities. We went into, we went to Santa Fe, and in Santa Fe, we did the entire route, we talked to the guy who drove that process, and the most remarkable aspect of that master plan were the little connectors between particular destinations. The other thing I'd like to talk about is when I look, and I've said this a million times, when I look out on my porch, I see two types of activity on my porch that involve the roads. One is I see kids and their families walking to the CDC, parents with the strollers, I see, I think Miriam is here, she rides her bike, she's a fifth grader that goes to Jose Badios. I see neighbors going and talking to one another, my neighbors and I talking to one another in the middle of the road, that's one type of activity. I see the aguas, they have their grandkids playing. The other type of activity is drivers going too fast and too aggressively, and this has been a problem since the beginning of our charter. You look at our charter, it says something about, one of the reasons for having a town in the first place is to prohibit the furious galloping of horses and mules through town or something like that. Frank Drysdale and I looked at the data for the survey that was supposed to, I think, go into the comprehensive plan, and one of the main dissatisfaction factors is traffic volume and traffic speed and aggression, and so when this master plan came out, I was pretty excited, because I was thinking that this was going to be a way of, this was gonna be a plan that helps trend the activities in front of my street and the other streets of this town toward the first activity and not toward the second. That second activity is damaging to a community. Unfortunately, the scope of the plan has been limited so much that really interesting possibilities were precluded way too early in the process, and that is something that really is something that I don't like to see in a democratic process. One of the problems too is that if you segregate, there is a problem with segregation of a particular, it's one minute, segregation of a particular user group. The problem is, is that we try to address one user group and preclude several other user groups, sometimes it's simpler, and the planning department is the one that should be able to do this. Look at, how might the purposes of the plan integrate with other interests and other plans, such as the comprehensive plan, the recommendations of citizen groups, et cetera? And I haven't seen that, and it really disappoints me. Before I end, do you want to say on a good note, we met with Alex Brown and Peter Penya, same sort of deal, where we come and talk to him about sheros, and we had representation from the Safe Routes to School, so the schools were involved, an advocacy group in the town, and in a 45-minute meeting, we got all sorts of stuff done, and that's the kind of stuff I'd like to see, and I guess I'm done with that.
Next up is Rebecca Summers.
Hello, Town of Silver City councilors, Mr. Mayor, town staff, I'm Rebecca Summer, co-chair with Jamie Thompson of the Bicycle Advocacy Group, and I will talk to you briefly on one point, and that is process. Process is defined as a systematic series of actions directed to some end. So in this case, as an example, it'd be directed to the development of a bicycle community plan. So then, the more people, the more interested citizens providing input to the initial stages of developing a plan, the better the plan. This is because it is built on the people's thoughts and ideas for their own community. Brainstorming sessions, including all interested citizens with the town staff, are paramount to the beginning stages of figuring out how to achieve the purpose of the plan. In other words, a safe bicycle plan for the use of all age groups, children to seniors. Another way of doing this is to have a series of roundtable discussions with interested citizens and the town staff. This includes much more than simply putting dots and lines on a map. It includes communication, ideas, looking at different facets. This series of roundtables provide the community-based actions to achieve bicycle safety routes and paths. This series of brainstorming sessions or roundtable meetings is where the scope of the planning action should begin. The second point is that the scope of the draft Bicycle Route Master Plan has already been inputted without systematic input from interested citizens in the town. So if there are going to be community input sessions as purported to happen, then given the process, there must be a series of sessions to reach a community-based plan. Thank you.
Next up is Andrew Tegarden.
Hello, council folks, mayor, city workers, my name's Andrew Tegarden, I live on 13th Street by the university. I teach math at Western, I'm an adjunct, I work at the Hiken Bike, Gila Hiken Bike as well, and I'm a coordinator for the Safe Routes to School program of Silver Consolidated Schools, so I work with the community a bunch, I encounter bicycle-related problems often, I work with kids, and I ride my bike, as often as I can. So when the draft plan came out, I provided comments to Mr. Coats that I believed was necessary to meet the stated purposes there at the beginning of the routes plan, and more specifically to fix particular problems that, you know, I've come across, talking with people, experienced myself with the issue, and these comments basically centered around my belief that off-street paths should be more extensively considered, and that there should be consideration given to safe routes to school issues. So during the Planning and Zoning Meeting last week, Mr. Coats used many of my comments to explain that the draft plan is actually of a more limited scope, and that the comments I made were basically moot, that they just didn't apply, just, I'm basically just echoing what other people are saying. So really, I believe the scope of that draft plan, routes plan, is the main issue. So I and many others are petitioning for the scope to be expanded, and if people will stand up that are kind of here in support of a more expanded scope to the Bicycle Routes Plan, we would appreciate it. Thank you. So, this is an opportunity that I really don't want to squander, I don't want this to be just like, put in there, we did something, we'll talk about it in the, you know, the long-term future. I want to say that, I also wanted to mention that a student of Stout Elementary was hit by a car yesterday at the, it was yesterday morning, it was at the 32nd Street, Silver Street intersection, and he, the student that was struck lives at the Valley Vista Apartments, which is subsidized housing, I believe, that's up the hill there, behind La Plata. Technically, my understanding is that it was his fault, he ran the stop sign, and he was on the wrong side of the road, he was on the left side of the road, proceeding, I guess that's south, but let's remember, he is a kid, and let's also remember that, you know, he's part of an at-risk population, and those of us that know that intersection and that area, it really should come as no surprise that this accident happened. So we need to coordinate our efforts here. Let's make a bicycle plan, not a Bicycle Routes plan. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Bedison, would you like to start? We pick it up at five minutes before the meeting. Councilor Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for their comments, I listened and I took notes, and I just, that's all I want to say right now, but your voices were heard, so thank you very much. This year's Tamal Fiesta in Moss was, over the weekend, was fabulous, I want to commend the Green Chamber for all the folks that were in town, and I heard from the Silver City Museum Director that they had 320 people come through their doors on Saturday, so that's, that was a massive amount of people for the Silver City Museum, and I'm really happy for them, so it was a great event downtown. And the Albuquerque Journal was there, and I didn't get a chance to read the article, but I know that they were featuring us because we are the only community in the state that actually holds a Tamal Fiesta, so that's pretty exciting, I didn't realize that. The Friday before, the Tourism Commission meeting was held in Silver City at the Silver City Museum Annex, and the commission meets about four times a year, two times they actually meet outside of Santa Fe, and this year they, one of those locations was Silver City, and so the chair of the commission actually was one of the folks that, actually was one of the, I guess, I was gonna say, judges for the Tamal Fiesta. So we got great press on the tourism website for the Department of Tourism, and it's a good thing for Silver City, bringing folks to town, and it goes back into some of the comments that were made here today. I also want to mention that the Silver City Museum's Victorian Christmas will be held this Thursday from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Please attend, I know Santa will be there for the kids, so if you can, please go down, and also stop by and see their holiday-themed exhibit, Winter Under Western Skies, I understand it's beautiful, and I plan to see it that evening as well. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Cook.
No comments, Dave.
Thank you, Councilor Rick.
No comment.
Thank you, Councilor Monis.
I'd also like to thank the, those who brought public input forth, you know, I've read little bits here and there about this plan, but don't have a strong understanding of where we're at and where we need to be, but what I appreciate most is perspective, when you come up here and talk to us, it gives us a perspective that's much more important than what I read on emails or hear from third parties, so I really appreciate that. Encourage others to, even if they didn't get an opportunity today, to continue coming, this is extremely important to see people come in and talk to us, and in fact, I even appreciated the little, those standing in support because it gives us perspective on the numbers that are in, that want to see different actions or progress in a certain way, so thank you all for attending and giving us some public input. No other comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council on November 27, 2012.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
And we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council for November 27, 2012.
Your second.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
There's a motion of second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council on November 27, 2012, is there any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion of second, no discussion for approval of the regular meeting minutes for November 27, 2012, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports, staff reports, and?
Mayor, councilor, just to announce the election information here, the upcoming elections, last year, team, I currently have candidate packets ready at City Hall and on our town's website for councillor in District 1 and councillor in District 3, so anyone who's interested in running for those offices can contact me at City Hall or check our website. The Declaration of Candidacy Day is January 8, in my office from 8 to 5 only. Should I repeat anything, Mayor?
No, just continue.
Also, I'm always looking for precinct workers, so anyone interested in working in the election should give me a call at City Hall. And one other thing, we are advertising for openings on town boards and committees, including the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission, the Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Citizens Advisory Committee, the Incentive Review Committee, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and the Museum Board.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
No reports.
Thank you. Any report from the Police Department? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the Continued Public Hearing on the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution 2012-27. This resolution deals with the designation of a Silver City Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area under the authority of the State of New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Code. The hearing was convened on November 13, 2012, with the Town Council serving as the hearing board and myself as the presiding officer. After substantial discussion and public input, it was deemed necessary to continue the hearing to tonight's regular council meeting. Although this hearing is not technically under the provisions of the Land Use Code, the matter is so closely related to the Land Use and Development Code that it is proper to utilize the Land Use Code provisions regarding the conduct of public hearings to the greatest extent feasible. Such procedures guarantees fair and transparent consideration of the matter with proper allowance for public input. Accordingly, all persons interested in this matter shall be permitted to be sworn and present evidence or opinion. Further, those persons shall be permitted to question staff and other witnesses giving testimony or presenting evidence, who shall remain available and respond appropriately. The presiding officer may impose reasonable limitations on the number of witnesses heard and the nature and length of their testimony. The presiding officer may limit testimony or evidence he finds to be irrelevant, cumulative, or otherwise inappropriate. At the previous hearing, we left off discussing the issue of findings to be considered, and adopted as support for the designation of the proposed Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area. Tonight's hearing will not necessarily be limited to that issue. Those of you who have been previously sworn are still under oath. If there are any persons not previously sworn who wish to testify or present evidence, the clerk will swear you in now.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any immediate plans to present testimony, but I want to stand available to answer any questions that might arise. I was not at the last meeting, so I will ask to be sworn in now.
Please raise your right hand and be good after me. Ayes.
Aye, Peter Russell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give.
That the testimony I am about to give.
And the matter before this council.
And the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. When you speak, please give your name, address, and indicate whether you are speaking for yourself or on behalf of another entity. Councilor Monis has agreed to sponsor this legislation and may now introduce or defer to Mr. Deans as the main proponent of adopting this resolution. And we are back on the hearing process as typical. Councilor Monis? Thank you. Mr. Deans, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, I'm Charlie Deans with Community by Design in Santa Fe, New Mexico.
It's not a button.
Thank you. Charlie Deans with Community by Design in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and I am here on behalf of the Town of Silver City and Silver City Main Street with this item. You received a revised report after some of the comments and direction from the council, but before I start talking about some of those changes, I thought it might be beneficial to connect some of the dots in terms of some background, particularly for maybe the new councilors on this matter, and as a refresher to some of the three of you who were here two years ago, because it's, the context is important, and I'll go through this very At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the Silver City Downtown Action Plan, which was adopted in October of 2010. I was under, my firm was under contract with the Town of Silver City to prepare this plan, and, which we did, and in that contract, my contract to prepare the Downtown Action Plan, there were tasks related to doing the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area process and the designation report, and ultimately having this plan adopted as a Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan. We fulfilled those tasks, closed out, the plan was adopted by resolution in October of 2010, closed out the contract, and for the October of 2010, closed out the contract, and for the most part, you know, accomplished most of what we were attempting to do. The next item on that agenda was actually on that, in October of 2010, after approving the Downtown Action Plan, was approving the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Designation Report, which again, that was also approved in October of 2010. The identical report that we talked about last month unanimously by, by the council, and that's the report you looked at. And the intent at that time in October of 2010, after the Downtown Action Plan was adopted and it was written to be, intended to be a Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan and the designation was approved with the boundary as we were talking about last month, the intent was to come back to you that next month in November or December and formally adopt the Downtown Action Plan as the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan. And I'm only, what happened at that point is that the legislature, for that session of legislation, was looking at changing some of the grocery receipts tax rules. And I, I forget the name of that legislation, it was had a sort of a funny name, but, but there was a concern by the town staff about moving forward with an MRA plan, potentially a TIF district and all those things, that if the town had to increase the grocery receipts tax because of this new leg, the legislation in this new session, it was going to confuse things. And so the decision by the town staff and myself was, let's hold off on adopting the MRA plan, although at that point, until the legislature was over and then we will come back and revisit that. And so we closed out my contract with the town and I agreed to, you know, when the town was ready, I would come back and make a presentation to the council and adopt the Downtown Action Plan as the MRA plan. Well, you know, two years went by and so people are busy and there were a lot of things going on, but eventually the town staff and, and Silver City Main Street, in fact, New Mexico Main Street said, you know, it's time to really, let's take this action plan back and finish the process and adopt it as an MRA plan. We're, we're pretty close, there's just this one adoption step. But a couple of things happened in those two years. There was a technical procedure that, that we found out about, which was no big deal, but, and the fact that there were two new councilors over the course of those two years, that the staff decided, we should bring this back as a designation, so everyone sort of understands the process, clear this up. And so that's where we are with the plan last month as well as the plan tonight. And so we have a designation report that is, is establish, is going to establish the area. And just so we can talk, when we start talking, having some discussion about this, the designation report establishes the area and it's the MRA plan that establishes the projects. And we haven't brought to you the MRA plan yet, but that would be the next step following tonight's outcome. If the designation gets re-adopted, I'll be back next month with the MRA plan, which is going to look identical to what the Downtown Action Plan is because it was written to be an MRA plan. I'll be back with the plan next month if we, once we complete this designation step. So things change over two years and we're back here. I, unless anyone has any questions, I just thought the context might be helpful. I'm back because the town asked me to come back, although the contract was done. You know, I, I would like to finish it myself and, and get the, the plan adopted as we was originally intended to happen two years ago. So that's just to give a little history about what occurred in the past. And now we're back this evening and I will get into some of the details with, there is a revised draft December 3rd that I think you received in your packet and we'll talk a little bit about this, some of the changes I've made based on your direction. If, unless there's questions about what happened two years ago. All right, thank you. So most of what I, I, it, there were a couple of things. First, what I heard at the last hearing is that there were some concerns about the, the term slum. And again, that happens to be in the legislation and the statute and the Redevelopment Code statute. We've deleted those references because we are not using that particular portion of the statute. Silver City is not a slum, it never will be, and it's not really what is being part of the, of the discussion. But the legislation, that statute does talk about blighted and I think we all, you know, there was some discussion about exactly what, you know, the, the, the statute outlines this definition, which we talked about a little bit last month. And the point I want to make about this, I'm not going to go over this, it's really broad. You know, I mean, it's really, it's pretty broad brush in terms of how the, the statute defines what they mean by blight and it's, you know, underutilized and it's some of those terms that I, I was using before, deterioration, under, underutilized parcels, unsafe conditions, and all of that. And the point is, is that there's no what we would call metrics associated with this. I mean, it's not like there's some, a performance criteria or some definitions about, well, what is underutilized? How is it, the statute doesn't define that. I mean, it, it's intentionally pretty broad in terms of its definition. And so it gives us some flexibility as far as how we want to apply this definition and apply it to the downtown area. And so it is a fairly broad brush, both in terms of its definition and how it gets applied when determining the boundary. The other point that I just wanted to make is that I tried to simplify the report in terms of reducing some of the text. I took out a couple of the photographs because there were questions on, you know, the, the WPA sidewalks. It was never intended to change the WPA sidewalks, but yeah, they, they could be, they, under the definitions of typical standards, they could be considered unsafe. But we all know why those sidewalks exist and they're certainly an important part of the character of, of Silver City. What I did not change, and I wasn't giving any clear direction on this, is that, but just for your information, the boundary that was in the last month's report, the boundary itself was not revised with the exception of, we had the one property owner north of college there that asked to be, so there's a little notch where that we've excluded the one property owner that requested to be, to be excluded. But I'm not going to go into all the specifics about detailed changes in the, in the, in the document, if you've had a chance to read it, but I did want to at least give you, I tried to simplify, combine some paragraphs, take out some of the inconsistent language that Councilor Bedesen had raised last time. And I can answer specific questions at this point. But, but the intent is, two years ago, for the most part, everybody thought it was a good idea. The process that we brought this back to you in terms of, we had a, a community workshop in September of this year where we notified all 350 property owners by mail who were within this MRA boundary, had a community workshop, 50 people came to the SILCO. I presented the information that I presented to you last month. And at this point, I haven't heard of any, either at that meeting or of any objections up to, from the staff or from the Silver City Main Street organization. So that's, that's where we are and if there's questions specifically about the report that I can address, that'd be great.
Councilor Bedesen?
Well, Mr. Deans, I appreciate the work that you did and you did, you did take most of the points that, that I recommended and that others did recommend. I, I think there's a, I like the fact that you changed a reference. Before in the previous document, we talked about the Silver City Historic District, but you changed it to the MRA to make it very clarifying, you clarified that. There's a few little instances where you were pulling out sentences, where you left in portions of other sentences that became redundant so that, you know, like on page 3, in the third paragraph, fourth paragraph where it says physical conditions within the MRA. As you go down, you talk about in the second sentence, second sentence under that fourth paragraph, disrepair where they exist, commercial structures have been abandoned and vacant lots dot this area. Then you say vacant lots and inconsistent pedestrian access. It's, it's not a complete sentence and vacant lots, yeah, it's awkward, so it's incomplete. Just, there's a few instances like that, the fourth, the fifth paragraph has a little bit of awkwardness to it at the end as well, but mostly it's good. The only, the only quibbling part that I, I still have is one of the issues I did bring up, which was the sentence under, the first sentence under economic conditions on page 10 now, where you state that as indicated by the numbers of vacant buildings in the downtown neighborhoods of Silver City, businesses have closed or moved out of downtown because of its physical condition. Now, I mentioned that previously and if we go to the statute that you quote on the code, the code does state in there that, well, a significant number of commercial or working title businesses have closed or significantly reduced their operations due to economic losses or a loss of profit. And we had talked about that being probably one of the reasons, not necessarily that they're running from downtown due to its physical condition. So I would like to see that, if we're talking about economic conditions, I think we need to break, bring that in because it does go to the code. So if this is approved this evening, I'm going to suggest changes be made to reflect that because I think it strengthens the, this particular report. And so I, I do appreciate the fact that you did withdraw information about our sidewalks because we will never change them. We know that they're not ADA friendly, but at the same time, it is what it is. And we have to figure, part of what it is, is figuring out how, how we can best with such a designation, how we can potentially make the downtown more friendly to folks with disabilities. So that, you know, and, and that's one of my, my concerns in life is ensuring that people with disabilities are able to negotiate our landscapes. So I think that an MRA designation would enable us to look at solutions to that. So, and, and I did go back to the Downtown Action Plan to look at how blight was used and it just says blighted areas rather than the whole downtown area being called blighted. But I completely understand the, the reason, but once again, I just want to commend you for listening to the council, at least listening to my, my concerns, so thank you.
I just want to clarify some things. We're not adopting this report. This report is introduced as evidence in the hearing and is to be considered in making a decision on the adoption or rejection of Resolution Number 2012-27. So we're not admitting whether everything in this report is factual. If we agree with it, your decision will be based on whether there was a preponderance of findings met that would qualify for the MRA and whether the area is of a desirable selection for the, the council. Councilor.
Just a quick question. So can it, I mean, as this suggestion that I gave you, yes, okay. Let me step back for a minute. I do understand that it's a, whether a preponderance of evidence has been, has been shown by this and other items for us to adopt the resolution, but since this is evidence, I would also like it to be correct evidence. You see what I'm saying?
I understand your desire, however-
It's not relevant to this.
-the hearing board-
Right.
Let me finish. The hearing board does not create evidence. We deal with the evidence that is put before us and we have to make a determination on our own as to the credibility of the evidence. So this is a piece of evidence and you can discredit any portion of it that you feel should be discredited or value any portions that you feel should support the resolution. The, obviously if there's enough that you discredit that would raise a question, then you would probably vote against the resolution. If you find that there is enough evidence that supports the definition and the code that's in the state statute for MRA and you're satisfied with the area that was proposed, then you would vote for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one more, one more comment.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm still concerned about the boundary. I know that it's the downtown, it is essentially what was the Silver City Historic Area, but I am concerned that it's a fairly large area, Silver City, and it does encompass a number of residential areas. I would like to see it narrowed and would recommend that it be narrowed primarily to a corridor that focuses on our artery streets that go from Hudson, uh, gotta get my bearings here. Okay, I've got to figure out what this street is, so. I'm trying to look at them. So I'm looking at this and I can't tell what the street is, sorry, I'm still. Can I have assistance from the community, uh, okay. Okay, so. This is, this is, this is outside of Hudson. But no, because to that.
Just from the corridors, it doesn't include Hudson Street, okay, so.
You would still say from Hudson because it's, it's, so from Hudson too. This is actually-
This is the other side.
Yeah, so it must go from Hudson to, no, no, no. Thank you, Mayor. Excuse, excuse me for just getting my bearings. I'd like to say go from Hudson on the east to Texas on the west and use those as the, as those boundaries and I think the northern and southern boundaries could, could stay within those confines, I wouldn't really adjust them that much. But I, I really, what I'm attempting to do is to cut out what I see as a lot of residential areas. I know that there's, there's some commercial that extends a bit more, but to me, that seems to be the primary corridor.
Councilor, is this?
From here back to be excluded?
Yes, and, and also the, the College Street area and also further up. So we'd have to-
This is Texas. This is Bullard, this is Texas.
Right, so you'd have to go straight up from Texas all, all the way up?
Yes, and then you would cut out the Bullard Street?
Right.
Businesses?
It's not Bullard.
And that's-
It's College.
Wow.
Yeah. And then further.
So this is-
I'm, I'm just, I'm taking that straight up, that, what is the street to the north of College if it's not Texas? What is that?
Grant Street.
Grant, okay. You see what I'm doing? I'm just trying to take a line that just goes straight up. I know that it changes, it's not yet. That's just how I see it in my view, but that doesn't mean that there can't be other suggestions, but that- in my view, but that doesn't mean that there can't be other suggestions, but that was just a basic view, the way I, my little world suggestion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dean? Any, Mr. Seibel, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, my name is Nick Seibel, the Silver City Main Street Project Manager, and, uh, appreciate your support of, uh, the resolution before you here tonight. Um, as Mr. Dean's outlined for you, this has been a very long process for us. Um, two years ago marked the culmination of an 18-month process that resulted in the plan that should you choose to proceed tonight will be before you. And, uh, part of that process, in fact, a substantial chunk of that 18-month process was devoted towards the discussion of what the boundary that you see on the wall there should look like. Um, that was quite a good cross-section of the community that was involved in that decision and we devoted many meetings to hashing over where the line ought to be and why and how it ought to be drawn. And ultimately, the decision is yours as the town council and I'm sure that any of us would be willing to work with, with whatever decision you might make. But I would like to point out that a great deal of work went into determining where that line is drawn. There were a lot of different considerations, um, that we looked at to arrive at it. And, um, there are parts of it that, you know, personally I don't agree with either. I think there's a great deal of merit in Council Edison's idea of using Hudson Street as the line, for instance. But it was a big committee, a lot of different voices, and this was sort of the consensus decision at the end. And so I'll put it out there that, uh, there were a number of citizens that were involved in this and I'm sure that they could each speak to you the reasons why different parts of it are in different places. Um, I, I did mention when we were here last month, um, that we ought to keep in mind that although the word blight is unfortunately attached to what we're doing tonight, I really look at this MRA and this MRA designation process as a real opportunity for downtown. And, um, although it's true, honestly, residential property is one way or the other, it doesn't have a great deal of impact on. And so, you know, the, whether or not they should be included, from my perspective, um, doesn't matter much. But I will say for commercial corridors, and I would say particularly the Broadway and Yankee and College Avenue corridors, that, uh, some of the things that we contemplate doing in the MRA plan that will follow this, um, might be very important. Um, for instance, College Avenue and Broadway both, um, have been so far left out of the streetlight program for downtown. And it's long been, um, one of the goals of Main Street to extend those streetlights up College Avenue to the university, to extend them up Broadway to the courthouse. And the tools that we will achieve by implementing the MRA might provide us with an opportunity to finally make that happen. Um, if they're left out of the MRA boundary tonight, it will deprive us of the opportunity of using those tools to accomplish those projects. And so I'll just mention that maybe that's an additional consideration you might like to keep in mind. Um, again, if any of you all have any questions about the process, I'd be happy to answer them. And a lot of this, I think, will become more clear if we move on and go into the plan process. Um, although I'd be pleased to talk about any elements of what we foresee doing with this too, if that's of interest to any of you. Thank you.
Hang in there, Nick. Counselor Edison?
Um, Nick, thank you very much for making up points and I need to clarify some stuff. So thank you. Um, I need to clarify this a little bit because looking at this, I wasn't very clear about. I was using, um, Hudson, but really what I want to do is retain the eastern boundary, the jagged edge, the way it is. Use, use the western, uh, boundary the way it is until we could incorporate and use, uh, College Street the way it is. But then I do, I would like it to come over to Texas and then down and then, um, come straight down and then go around, uh, the Broadway in terms of about a one-block radius. And I, I'm sorry that I forget the streets downtown. I know how to drive them. I just can't remember the street names. So if, uh, Mr. Russell could assist me for a minute so I could, I can't remember the names.
Well, if I Broadway and then-
There's Broadway, but I can't remember.
That's Yankee.
Okay, so Yankee.
Each one's market.
No, the one down.
Uh, Spring.
Okay.
This is Spring.
So-
Yankee and that's Market.
Texas to, um, Yankee with the commercial buildings on the other side, all the way up to the courthouse and then down to-
Spring.
Spring. Um, and then, I guess, jutting out to follow the, the rest of that eastern boundary. So-
Market.
So this stays the same and then you take Texas down to Yankee?
Right.
Go up to then, okay, and then come down, come down Spring or?
Not completely.
Usually what you do is you go in the mid-block.
Go in the mid-block.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then you would come down the mid-block here or do you want to come down the way?
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, he's going, he can do this in a different color line.
Thank you.
You can have your proposal cleared up and, and we can all understand it much better than-
Okay, Mayor, I move for a short break.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
There's a motion, a second for a short break. All those in favor, sitting in the face of the Senate. Any opposed? Motion carries. Call this meeting back to order. Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, working with Mr. Russell and Mr. Deans and with Mr. Seibel, this is, uh, is this include everything? If you want to zoom it, go back to the broader picture just so they can see what's the entire proposal. So with the combined, um, purple and then where the yellow lines go, that's the proposal I have for the way the MRI, MRA, uh, designated area would look like. Um, I know that the cutout portion, uh, does include, uh, some businesses. So between the yellow and the purple lines, um, there are some businesses that are included, especially around near the courthouse and, and several other areas. But there's also in some of the yellow boundaries, some residences. My sole purpose for proposing this is to try to remove as many residences as possible and to focus primarily on the commercial corridor. So that's my proposal as it stands for the area and, uh, it is, um, up to the council to do what they wish with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Cook.
Mr. Dean, by, uh, changing the boundaries and making the area smaller, does this mean that there will be less money available to, I mean, is it a square footage type of, or square mileage type of, uh, development program that you need to get more money if you have a bigger area?
No, it won't, it won't affect any funding amounts or funding qualities. It will, um, it will, the areas that have been excluded under this proposal won't have all of the economic development tools that, that the statute allows. It's really, it's not going to really change the funding, but the benefits as a result of the redevelopment code won't apply to those areas that have been excluded.
The ones, the new lines, the yellow lines?
Yeah, the, the lines that have been, yeah, the areas between the yellow and the purple that are being excluded, they won't have the benefit of some of those other tools that the statute allows that we talked about last month.
Uh-huh, okay.
Counselor Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it took a long time to develop the, as articulated earlier, to, uh, develop these lines through, uh, a lengthy process. What was the driver to include those areas? Was it mainly to, uh, allow more tools to be available for those areas as well, considering their proximity to the business district and their, uh, their potential to, uh, to add to the, the flavor of the downtown district? Or was there, was there more or less involved in that?
Yeah, Peter can answer and I'm hoping his answer is the same as mine. We'll see what he says and then I'll add what I recollect as, as the process.
The western commercial. Now it is historic, yeah, family, but you recall, we added the new category to allow residential use as well as commercial use in that historic area which reflected the residential character of the area. What many of the residences in that area could become commercial, then like the art gallery or something like that. So that was one of the elements of the other element was that typically these kinds of lines are drawn mid-block because the street forms a street scape. And so if you're going to be doing work on the street, you're going to be doing sidewalks or, you know, water infrastructure or something like that. If the middle of the street is a dividing line, then it constrains your ability to do some of the infrastructural work. So that's why the lines are typically drawn mid-block as opposed to on the street. Now, obviously the concerns that Council of Edison is hearing are getting with concerns that people have lived in residences. They're wondering why they should be in a, uh, an MRA district. Um, so that is obviously something that needs to be balanced as you all think what the boundary should be.
Yeah, no, that was correct. A lot, the zoning map at the time, we followed the commercial zoning boundary at the time, two years ago for that purple line with, you know, that there may be transitions, conversions from residential to, to commercial purposes and entrepreneurial ship and they would have these kind of tools that, that the statute allows.
And the current designation still allows for that to be, for those areas still to be, uh, converted to commercial?
Yes, there's some limitations to the commercial path. So it's different now, but you might allow a highway. Uh, it's much more geared towards, uh, businesses that are compatible with residences. One thing I should mention is this area here is still residential aid, but almost every single building on College Street to this edge is commercial. And Jim Coates is working on, uh, a rezoning proposal for that area, but he has deferred it until the MRA issue is resolved, just so that people don't get confused about, are we doing a rezone or are we doing an MRA or what is it? But right now, this area here is residential, although it's the, uh, the library, the Breuerville, the La Cucina, you know, a number of other businesses.
Has there been a lot of input, uh, with, with concern? I haven't heard any concerns of, of people not wanting to be in this. So going back to the public meetings where it seemed like the consensus was this is good. Has there been a lot of feedback that this isn't a good thing?
I haven't heard any. Mr. Coates, have you heard anything? And then there was a meeting, uh, a couple of months ago where 50 people came. But, uh, I know that this person directly, this, this owner has directly expressed the concern to be excluded. I'm sure that, that, um, interest is, that, that kind of concern is, is what, uh, Council of Edison's here is for, for residences.
Thank you. Counselor Edison?
Um, Mr. Russell, I know that during my time on, uh, council, we've actually had a number of requests in some of the areas that I've excluded where buildings that had been used as commercial have been changed to residential buildings or at least they request. Now, there's been a move, you know, at least with this complete zone change to a commercial historic district has allowed them to be able to refinance their buildings. Um, and many, some of those buildings are going towards residences rather than going towards commercial now. And it seems that there's a move toward that in some areas of the district. And that's part of my concern with, um, with, with doing that is that I've seen that trend since I've been on council and at least in some of the, the, those properties that have, have gone up and have been of concern, um, that have come before the council and the, and the changes and their, their requests for change. So that's, that's hence my, I mean, there's been, over time, there's been some, some change and, and I think that part of that is reflective that, and I think in terms of, uh, some of the provided access to economic benefits, I know that they won't have them, but Silver City is still, um, going to have access to CDPG funds. The, the MRA doesn't really increase that because they've already have, we already have access to CDPG funds in this area, correct?
Well, perhaps not. Um, what the MRA does is it allows an automatic qualification. You don't have to do any means testing. But if you have to interview, uh, the people, if you're going through the regular CDPG process, then a certain percentage have to be low income. And it might be the case that if they're not in the MRA, then they might not be able to benefit from a CDPG type project that might work on, say sidewalks or sewer lines. Um, it's just a trade-off, you know? I, I understand the concerns.
Well, and, and I ask this because we're still designated a colonist, although we are already in certain areas. Some of this does extend in to the Chihuahua Hill area and that-
It is my understanding that every colonist and CDPT, every infrastructure project that we are doing that are being funded with colonists or CDPG money require a means survey of the neighborhood to assure that they-
That they meet.
-those income limits. And so that's why the CDPG funds tend to be focused on Chihuahua Hill and Brewerville, not, say, from Junior Street.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Maronis?
Um, just, just to make sure, uh, I think we, we found that there, there has been trends and there's been changes which illustrate reality. So, so those changes can actually revert back and we can find trends going the, the other way. But what you're saying is this really secures those areas to a much greater toolbox and we just don't know under the other.
Yes, I understand. Yes, that's correct. As far as the toolbox, I do want to address the question. There's not a direct relationship between the size of the MRA and the, and the funding level, but the, the change in rules in the CDPG funding is that an area that's been designated as an MRA is eligible for CDPG, um, as opposed to previously, it was only based on income levels. And that's why there were two areas, neighborhoods, Chihuahua Hill and Brewer Hill, that were the two neighborhoods that were eligible for CDPG. By keeping these areas in under the MRA designation, it does give them access to CDV, uh, CDPG funding for infrastructure and other improvements, um, in addition to the two neighborhoods that, that currently qualify under the income levels. So there is a benefit to, to that area in addition to some of the other tools about public-private partnerships and that we've, that we've talked about. Jim, were you sworn in the last meeting? Okay. And then I'd like to stop right now and I believe Kurt wants to be sworn in if he'll come to the podium. Anybody else that wants to be sworn in to say something, please come to the podium. Last call. Last call.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
(inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible).
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony I am about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Let me go to the room. I'll call you here in a second. I have a question and I would really like to hear an answer from all three of you, Peter, Russell, Charlie Deans and Nick. Is there any negative impact on any single lot that is included within the purple, the area that was presented by designating it within an MRA? Mr. Deens?
No.
Mr. Russell?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I do not believe there is any negative impact that would occur on any property that's included in that, but there is the issue of perceptions and how people feel about the property.
Thank you. Mr. Sebel?
Mr. Mayor, no.
Thank you. I'm going to address some of the discussion last time. The, there's testimony that says that there was, there's no negative impact by designating any of the areas. The issue then comes on perception. I have no objection to calling an area blighted that's blighted. And the definition is very clear. There's evidence presented within the designation report, both in transcript as well as picture that demonstrates that there are areas that are blighted. And if we use our attorney's phrase from last meeting, there are areas that are ugly and they need help. And I think for us to ignore that and just go on with a wonderful Chamber of Commerce statements is burying our heads in the sand. And when you, when you look at a process, you look at a decision-making process, you weigh the pros and cons and unintended consequences, and we just had three people testify that there are no cons. There is opportunity. By narrowing the guideline, we are removing some areas from having that opportunity. I think in history has shown that we function better if we focus better. And I think that's where the line narrowing has a positive aspect to it. However, it's still a fairly small geographic area when you look at Silver City overall, when you look at the potential, and when you look at the fact that this means absolutely nothing to any single lot within the designated area until we develop a project. So we don't have to use any of this. It does not indicate that every property and project that's gone on in that area is blighted. It indicates that the area has some qualities that could impact the economic viability and support within the town. So I just hope that the council will consider that as you make your decisions. And Mr. Albert Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As someone who was a participant in the downtown plan process, I assure you there was a lot of public input. There were meetings at different times of day to make sure that people could get there from the public. The boundaries on that map, I've probably looked at 135 times in different colors and different lines, and there were lengthy discussions about where this one went and where that one went. And I don't remember all the details of that little left-hand corner there, but you answered, you actually asked my other question, which was, what does it mean if my house is in this area and I get designated? And I don't know the answer to that, but it sounds like it's not much, if anything. And the, the last question was actually for Charlie. Does this have a relationship to TIF financing? Is the MRA part of TIF?
Should I just say? The TIF financing will come at a future meeting? When we look at the MRA?
Does it use the MRA as part of its...
Yeah, yeah. And all of that, but it will, the statute requires that areas that are going to be within the TIF district, if a TIF district is approved in Silver City, the areas within the TIF district have to fall within the area that has been designated in the designation report. That those are, those are the areas, those are the properties that would both contribute to the increment and that special fund and also are the beneficiaries of that fund, that the money is collected both within the MRA designated area and spent within the MRA designated area. So to that degree, if a TIF district is indeed created, that's what this line would represent.
Thank you. I've made my point.
I think, thank you.
Council of Medicine.
I just want to thank the mayor for the questions he asked, because those are some of the things that ran through my mind when I was suggesting this. It's been my experience in life that unfortunately, perception is 99% of reality for many people. And that's the reason why I proposed what I've proposed. I know that it limits the opportunity for those individuals, but in accommodating that perception that while it does not necessarily harm them, that there's a perception that somewhere down the line, it may harm them in the future, simply because somehow their property's been included within an area that has been so designated as blighted, while they put considerable amount of money in there that they leave it to their children or they decide that they have to sell their property. I mean, I know that there is, based on everything that was said, that there is not necessarily the fact that that would happen, but sometimes you can't change perception. So, and it's true, at this point, this is a resolution. It will not go any, it may not go any further than this. So there's the weighing between people's perception, you know, but it's a resolution that may not go, resolution still affects that perception. So I'm still, have made this recommendation and leave it for the council to decide what they want to do with it. It doesn't mean I'm necessarily married to it, but I'm trying to accommodate people's perceptions and their desires. So I think it's, it's important to acknowledge that because it does affect people greatly. And, sorry, it's the anthropologist in me. I mean, it's very hard to change perception, so, thank you.
I would just argue that with the testimony that we've heard at the beginning of the hearing and tonight, that the reality of a blighted property may cause more harm than this designation of the area in need of work, as well as excluding them would then eliminate them from potentially fixing the neighbors' areas.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
You know, I usually, I go through these processes like this so that I can hear comments from other council members, from folks like you and other people in the audience, and I readily can change my mind. So I withdraw my recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Deens, for taking the time and everyone else for doing it, but I think the mayor's last comments convinced me that your neighbor across the street may not have put as much time and effort into, or could not, may not have been able to put as much time and effort into your own as, or property as you have. And this will provide opportunities for them to do so. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there, is there any other discussion? Any other witnesses in support of this resolution? There any witnesses that wish to testify against this resolution? Mr. Deens, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
Thank you, Councilwoman Anderson. Thank you, Councilwoman Anderson, for your, I think it's good to at least understand that, you know, the information and perceptions are, you're right, that's a lot of people's attitudes and the information that they want. I don't consider it a waste of time. I thought it solicited a great discussion about how this works and...
No, I agree. You know, I think it's very important that, one, for the record, that there be open discussion and as well as to make sure that we capture the intent of the designations. If there is no other testimony, is the council prepared to render a decision?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I entertain a motion.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 2012-27, Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Designation, making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and designating the Silver City Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area as presented.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor? I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-27. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-27, Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Designation, making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and designating Silver City Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area. Roll call, please.
Hi.
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 Councilwoman Anderson.
Hi.
Motion carries. There's a question. I want to clear something up. Just for the public's interest, the entire town has not been declared blighted. It is just within that area. The designation of a colonia within the town has very specific guidelines that it only qualifies on border states that are within 150 miles of the Mexican border and is basically for developments that were pre-1990. And making sure that those areas are able to acquire the necessary and functional infrastructure that are needed to maintain the safety and health of the residents that live there. So we did not declare the whole town blighted, nor have we ever. Next on the agenda is an appeal by Mr. Bruce McKinney of an interpretation by Community Development Director Peter Russell regarding the classification status of certain parcels of town-owned land sought for exchange by Mr. McKinney. Upon inquiry, Mr. Russell had informed Mr. McKinney that those particular parcels are presently classified as present and future parks and open spaces or parkland or open space land donated to the town under use restrictions. Mr. Russell argues that town-owned land so classified cannot be sold, leased or exchanged by the town under the provisions of Section 4822B of the Town's Municipal Code. Mr. McKinney appeals that determination. The appeal will follow the general rules regarding public hearing and the town council shall be the appeals board and I will be the presiding officer. Witnesses will be sworn. Appellant Mr. McKinney will present his evidence first, then the director of community development will follow. Both sides may question the other and both sides will remain available for questions from the council. All questions shall be directed to the hearing officer. The letter from Mr. Russell to Mr. McKinney dated November 1, 2012, and the notice of appeal filed by Mr. McKinney dated November 2, 2012, will be considered part of the record. After submission of evidence and response to questioning, both sides shall have an opportunity to make a closing statement. Mr. Russell goes first than Mr. McKinney. The appeal will be limited to the consideration of two issues. The first issue, although not particularly specified in the appeal, must consider whether the code provision generally regulating the sale, lease or exchange of town-owned land is constitutional and within the town's permitted powers. The town attorney has taken the position in the affirmative. Notwithstanding, Mr. McKinney will be permitted to argue and present evidence to the contrary. The second issue is whether the parcels sought for exchange by Mr. McKinney fall within those land classifications mentioned in Section 48-22B, which are barred from sale, lease or exchange. If the parcels are so classified, then Mr. McKinney will be forewarned that no application for sale, lease or exchange made by him or any other person regarding these parcels will be accepted by the town. If it is the decision of the council that the parcels are not so classified, Mr. McKinney will be free to submit appropriate applications for purchase, lease or exchange. Nothing in this appeal, however, will indicate to Mr. McKinney any predisposition towards such application if later submitted. The clerk will now swear in all persons intending to testify or otherwise offer evidence in this proceeding.
Please print your name.
You have the floor to present your case. And I just want to clarify, did I represent your appeal properly in my...
Well, I asked specifically before, I asked staff before this came up, whether I would be able to, if you accepted my interpretation, whether I'd be able to make my argument in favor of making these exchanges. So there's the question of whether these exchanges are legal and there's the question of whether they are wise. And I asked that question specifically of staff, and my understanding was that both of those questions could be addressed at the same hearing. So are you saying... So, are you saying, that's what you seem to be saying, is that we're only talking about whether they're legal or not, not whether they're a good idea? And it's hard to separate those two.
The appeal is based on the interpretation that the property in question is designated as open space or falls under open space and parks area.
Mm-hmm.
There is, there is no purpose in discussing whether anything's a good idea if the designation and Mr. Russell's rulings, his decision stands that it is. If it is not, then at that point, it would be appropriate. However, to discuss that, you have an opportunity to file an application for that, that property.
You know, this has been going on for four months with a continuous process and as I understand what you're saying is that we'd have to do three separate meetings. First, to decide this appeal. Second, to decide whether you want to do the land swaps. Third, whether you want to do the vacation. And I asked staff specifically whether I'd be able to address the, the staff, these questions at this meeting. And so I have a presentation that includes, you know, more of the context as well as the legal issue, but the context of whether, of the swaps themselves. It's hard to kind of totally separate those.
I'm looking at your application right now for your appeal that was, you filed on the 11th, 2 of 2012. And it is an appeal based on the determination by the community development director that the land was, fell within the restricted criteria. Your, I don't have any documentation before us that would, would consider, I mean, I have your proposals that you, that are supporting this appeal and where all you're headed.
So, I, I submitted what, what the, the staff gave me was a, a package this thick of all my proposals and all, every draft, every email that I ever sent on it, all sorts of things and, but none of those are being considered. Is that correct? Do you have the same, each of, do I understand correctly that each of you, the council members, has that same package?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Did you, did you see the agenda?
Yes, I, I, I understand that, but I...
That is the only thing that we are legally allowed to address because that is the only thing that was noticed.
Well, I just want to note for the record that I will address just that issue, but that I asked the question of staff and they did not answer it correctly.
Your point is taken. Bruce, you want to bring that microphone over there with you? The one on the top.
If I have, this is...
You're gonna need to turn it more towards us.
See that? Okay. So, please excuse me because I'm gonna have to edit on the spot because I have a lot of other things, issues that I was addressing in this study. I'm gonna have to kind of cut those out, but I'm trying to decide what they are. But first, I'm Bruce McKinney and I'm here to... First, I'm the owner of this brown bill, that's this light, light yellow here. And I think all of you have that in the proposal. You might want to look at, you have three different proposals in your package. And the second one has all these maps with higher resolution and better color. The third one is the actual proposal that has the correct text, but it has black and white. So, you might want, there's no difference in the pictures in the second proposal. Anyway, for several years I've been struggling and unsuccessfully developed this area as green cluster housing community and to do a profit. And second, I'm a citizen activist for trails in Silver City, especially but not only the San Jacinto Trail, which is being in blue, coming down here and going over to Mountain View Road. Sometimes there's a conflict between being a developer and being a public activist, but I try to walk that line. I'm surprised to be here in conflict over what I consider the minor part of my proposal. I described this area, this idea in general to the community development director several years ago and he's in favor of it. I submitted my proposal in August with the expectation that there might be some negotiation of the boundaries and details, but I never expected there'd be four months later with this thick confusing package, which you folks have here, with every email exchanged and every draft in my proposal. It's way too much information, too much process, and way too much time for simple boundary just. I'd like to show that this land swap is simple, inexpensive, legal, and mutually beneficial. If you prove it, you get more benefit than I do. If you don't, you risk losing something more important. So, I was gonna talk about the, the money aspect of this first, but I guess skip over that. To say that, you know, it doesn't matter whether, whether it costs $4,000 as Peter says, or $700 as I, as I would argue, but the, the, I understand that swapping land is illegal. You can't do it no matter how advantageous it is. But it is illegal and here's why. The director's ruling is that the land can't be exchanged because the town cannot lease, sell, or exchange land that is a present or future park or open space, or land that was donated to the town with use restrictions. But here's the, the resolution. And this is in your package, the first two Mexico bank donations. And the last page of that is Resolution 2005-11. And I'm gonna read the resolution like most of them, consists of several parts. Here's first the, the title and then the preface, which is the whereas statements, and then finally the resolution itself. Now, the resolution says, "Now therefore be resolved by the council of the town in Silver City that the town hereby authorizes and accepts the donation of property described as track pay, track paid, and so on," gives the whole legal description of that track. And that track is this track right here excluding, you know, excluding the parts that are in red and including the parts that are in, of, of yellow here. So, and including that. So, that's it. That resolution says that the town hereby authorizes and accepts the donation of property. There's no dedication of land as open space. There's no use restriction. And that's not in the resolution. Now, if you look at the title, apparently the director's claim is that the title, title is equivalent to a dedication. The title says that the, the donation was for the purpose of enhancing the town's trails and open space network. Well, I'm not a lawyer and your lawyer could probably tell you more about this, but in most legal documents, the title and the preface, and the preface, the whereas clauses, explain a resolution, but they don't have legal effect unless the intent of the resolution is unclear. This resolution is perfectly clear. It is not a dedication for open space. It's not a use restriction. And even if you consider the title, the phrase "enhancing the trails and open space network" isn't a dedication as open space. It doesn't say adding to or becoming part of an open space. It just as easily meaning, means acquiring land to swap for more useful land, which is what I'm proposing. It wouldn't have made sense to dedicate a park or trail before it was even designed. There was no trail here. There was no design even. And all these, the, the trail, these markers, we, we designed this and because I was buying this simultaneously, I actually drew these lines. So, you know, I went with Rick Miller and the other person that worked on that was, for the town, was Joseph Kendron. And we went and we looked at these lines and, and said, we went out with the surveyor and we set where the lines were. And so, we, we made mistakes. The town's trail goes onto, to my property in several places and I accidentally gave the town several pieces of land that, that I would, I would like that, basically, that they're, they're not of any use to the town and they're not, they're, basically what we're talking about is an exchange of, I'm giving land that is no value to me, but is of value to the town. And I'm asking for land that is of value to, to me, but has no value to the town. And for example, there's a, a speed bank and vegetation here. So, nobody on, using the trail actually comes up to this area. You can't get to this area except through my property. So, it wouldn't have made sense to dedicate a park before the trail was even designed. Unfortunately, the league and council wouldn't do that. The director's interpretation is an act of thought that isn't supported by evidence and was not accepted at the time. So, in fact, what, what happened is a few months after this, this donation was made, Joseph Kendron came to me and said, "We're, we're actually designing the trail and in several places, the trail comes onto your property." And he mentioned this spot in particular and this spot. And I said, "Don't worry about it. We'll work it out later." And so, we'll, we'll make some exchanges and, and work that out. Now, then, you know, about a year or so later, when I was planning this, this development, I was planning a land unit development here and I discussed this with the, the director. And I said, "I would, I propose pretty much what we're seeing here." I said, "I'd like to swap these, these pieces for, for these pieces so that, that you could, your trail would be on your property." And the, the director did not say at that time, "Well, we can't do that because that would be illegal." He didn't interpret that way at that time. When Joseph Kendron came to me, he didn't interpret that way. So, this is an act of thought, this, this interpretation. And I would just like to say that this is how parks are usually done. Take Boston Hill, for example. I recently asked Peggy Smith, actually came to be the owner of this land right here, the trail crossing. There's a little piece here and it's not the most valuable piece of property around. But how did she come to get it? She said that it was part of a multi-party land swaps that were made to acquire Boston Hill. Sometimes it's worse trading than it takes to get the land you need. You currently have staff, consultant, and volunteers working on a plan to create trails on Silver Creek and King of Southwood Creek. You may need to swap, sell, or buy land to complete that project. It would be a bad precedent to tie your hands with an inflexible interpretation. So legally, that should be the end of discussion. There's no, there wasn't any dedication of a plan. Fun fact, I want to show that community development is misinterpreting open space policy throughout Silver City. You can see other examples on the, the open space, the city parks map. And I know that you guys probably can't see this very well from here, but I hope you're familiar with it. It's on your website and, but, and I'll describe the pieces that I found by anyway so you'll know what I'm talking about. On this, on this map, the greens, the parts, and the light green is open space. This is what the community development department considers to be open space. But many areas that are marked in green in here are not actually open space, they're abandoned space. And the disturbing thing is that the community development doesn't seem to understand the difference. Urban open space is a natural environment that is well and may easily be used by elements of civilization, trails, fences, benches, pecking tables, and interpretive signs, visible and readily used for hallmarks of open space. Abandoned space is marked by a lack of visibility, lack of use, and lack of law enforcement. You can usually find evidence of illegal activity, including infinal roads and ATV tracks, trash dumping, drug and alcohol use, and unofficial swatters camps. Open space is good, abandoned space is bad. For example, here's this, on this map, if you recognize this as Boston Hill, the green space here, and that's open space because it has trails, benches, and signs, and has constant legitimate use. But this 20-acre block of land right by Ursula Major, I hope you all know what I'm talking about, right by Ursula Major and going down toward 180, it's abandoned space. It's not, not open space. There's no trails, there's nothing there. You see the example of, of illegal activity here? And if somebody came and offered you money for this, would you really say it was illegal to, to sell this? I, I hope not. And another example, well, the, the, this open space shows this area right here. This is the space where Vista Cletus is and where it's planned and also the, where you planned the proposal for Broadway. Broadway, open space, a couple of years ago, that didn't quite go through, but maybe lost some aid. And so that's marked as open space, but it's not open space. It's part of the original Brazier subdivision from 1879. It has, has covered a platted roads and locks. And if you wanted it to be open space, you'd need to vacate the subdivision and dedicate it as open space. But then Vista Cletus and your proposal income housing project on Broadway would be illegal. So, you can see just the bottom part of it on this map. So, you can see just the bottom part of it on this map. These are all the roads here. Broadway is on it, going that way, and all these other roads, and it's covered with locks. And yet, on your map, it's marked as open space. The new land use code has an open space zoning category, and that's the perfect tool for dedicating open space. But open space policy should be made by this council after public discussion, not by community involvement rulers. So, that's, that's why I think, I think it's pretty clear that that is an open space, and the real important question is, is whether you can get rid of this awful subdivision. This is the 29-year-old subdivision that really ties up that whole area, and that's the important issue. This whole land swaps, that is, even if they were, even if you didn't think it was important, it would be much more important to be concerned about getting rid of this subdivision. Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'm going to ask Mr. Coats to help me just a little bit with some images. Thank you, Mayor. The, you have a report before you. It has the proposals that Mr. McKinney made. It has a staff report that I generated, but I just want to touch on a few of the highlights It's true that in the town, there are lots of nuances about the meaning of open space. The map that Mr. McKinney held in his hand is something that was generated by a previous planning director. There was a Trails and Open Space Plan. A lot of that is on that Trails and Open Space Plan, but it's an informal designation. It's true that we have an open space zoning category now, that we have not actually applied to any specific pieces of ground. So, when I made the interpretation about what was open space and what qualified for exchange or sale, I relied on the resolutions accepting the First New Mexico Bank donation, and that's this picture that you see here. So, I relied on the resolution, the purpose of the council receiving this donation was for the purpose of open space. The second parcel that Mr. McKinney's exchange proposal involves is this parcel here called the Alcorta tract. That parcel also has a resolution under the auspices of receiving it for open space, but it was purchased with a grant from the State Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department specifically for that purpose. Includes exchanges on the donation property here, and here, for his benefit, and here. And this parcel overlaps into the Alcorta tract. So, he's proposing acquisition or exchange of properties, both from the donation that was received by the town for the purposes of open space, and from the Alcorta tract, which was acquired for the purposes of open space and trails with money specifically to that purpose. There's only one other tract of land that I would interpret as having the limitation of parks or open space that were acquired and are in the general open space category, and that would be Boston Hill, which was acquired with a bequest that was made to the town specifically for the purpose of acquiring or developing parks. So, those are the only three parcels that I would interpret that currently have that restriction about the open space. The others are, in fact, at the discretion of the council and awaiting some kind of formal open space designation or zoning designation. I did rely on the resolution purposes, and that's the basis of my interpretation.
Are there any questions for either of the witnesses? Counselor Madison?
I have a question for Mr. McKinney. Mr. McKinney, in your presentation, you stated that you gave this land in reference to the tracts of land that are sub-designated as the First New Mexico Bank donation. You stated you gave this land to the town, and you made a mistake. Is it not correct that the donor to the town was First New Mexico Bank in Southern City, who was the owner of said property at the time to foreclosure? They were the owners prior to your purchase of the property.
Right. And I'm sorry if I misstate that, because I always think of it that way, but that's, you're absolutely correct, and I can tell you the story of how that happened. Did I disappear here?
Too close.
Okay. Am I okay? So, it's kind of an interesting story. I call it the Zen Real Estate Story. And I, just to review what happened in...
Back away. Back away from excellent.
Okay. In, in December of 2004, the council considered a donation from the bank. And the donation that they were going to make is different than what was actually made. And can I use your... So, if you looked and made a line like this, and you went right like this, that's pretty much what they were going to do. This whole strip down the center, this was actually on the end. And there appears to be no, appears to be no remaining map that shows that. I asked Jim to find one for me in the file, and apparently, it's gone. But, so, the neighbor, Ed Horton, complained about that, that line, and he said that the actual boundary, if I can show it right here, is a fence, which, if you see two lines there, the fence is the inside line, not the outside line. I'm trying to correct that error, because the actual boundary that was drawn is outside the fence. But Mr. Ed Horton said that he owned that little triangle there up to the fence. And also, there was an issue of slag, basically, mining results that were there, and that there was some question as to whether there was an environmental issue. So, if you look at the first resolution, it says, "They accepted the donation subject to these two things, that the First New Mexico Bank would indemnify the town for any problems with the environmental issues, and also resolve this issue with Ed Horton." Well, there was no resolution to those issues, and so, the first thing in December just went nowhere. You know, the conditions were never made, so the resolution never happened. So, then, early that spring, I got involved in this, and I decided that I was looking at possibly buying this property from the bank. So, I talked to various people about this, and I found out about the donation, and that it hadn't gone through. And so, I proposed the alternative, which you see there, which is where the corridor goes through the center of the property rather than through the southern part of it. And I cut out that disputed part and said, "I'll just keep that, because it's not very important." And I said, you know, "I'm going to make a proposal to the bank." And then, it was coming up time to make that decision, and I decided that I didn't want to really, I thought about it a lot, I talked with other people, and I decided I didn't really want to be a land developer after all, which probably would have been the right decision. But, anyway, but I thought I could influence the bank to make this decision. So, what I did is, I proposed, I made an offer to the bank, and I made it so low that they couldn't possibly accept it, but I submitted this map of how to make that donation. And so, I thought, you know, if I submit this offer, it's going to go to the bank board, and the bank is going to have to consider my offer, and they'll see how they could make this donation without, you know, avoiding the controversies. And then, they accepted my offer. So, I got the property, and I got to actually go there with, as I said, with Rick Miller, but Joseph Gendron also walked it, and we decided these boundaries. And we made mistakes, and I'm just trying to correct those mistakes. And...
So, I understand that you are the one that did these boundaries, but the bank donated the property, and I guess...
Yes, but it wouldn't... Sorry.
I'm trying to figure out how to rephrase my question, how to phrase it. A donation's been made by another entity. So, I'm not sure how you can come back and correct something that a donation's been made that has been stipulated in both the agenda and in the minutes as, I want to make sure, in the first agenda and in the minutes as a donation for the purpose of enhancing the town's trails and open space network. And as was noted earlier this evening by the mayor, what is stated on the agenda is the item that is considered by the council. And the resolution title is part of the agenda, and in that title, it states that it's for the town's trails and open space network.
It's for...
The discussion, as presented by Mr. Gendron in 2004, that was the original resolution with conditions, states that the land was offered to the town by First New Mexico Bank to be included in the trails and open space network. So, that...
No, that's not what it says. Read it.
I just read, sir, to you, what it states in the minutes. Joseph Gendron explained that this land was offered to the town by First New Mexico Bank to be included in the trails and open space network that is being developed, period. That's in the minutes of the town council meeting of December, where the original resolution was read and accepted with conditions.
That's not what it says in the resolution itself. Can you...
I'm making a statement. It's also legal, these minutes also were, these are actions of the council. Council has considered that this was information that was presented for our consideration, for their consideration, and that decisions were made upon, were based on this information. And so, my question to you is, your information is based solely on the way the resolution is composed, and it does not consider, and it does not consider the agenda as an item or the council minutes, although your appeal statement does state that the council minutes did not include any information to that fact.
My...
Your appeal statement... Got to figure out where I... Minutes of the council meeting indicate that the intention of the council to acquire land for the San Vicente Trail. And I can't find that in any of the minutes, anywhere. It says Trails and Open Space.
Yeah.
So, you had used in your appeal statement that this was not for open space, but it was for the San Vicente Trail. I'm confused between your appeal statement that we received as documentation of your appeal, and the statements you made here tonight. If you could clarify which one it is.
Well, I can't remember what I wrote in the appeal statement. Let me... These resolutions state that the donation was for the purpose of enhancing the town's trail and open space network. Enhancing, not becoming part of, not, you know, it's, this is extremely legalistic interpretation. But when you, if you're going to interpret this legalistically, why not interpret it to your advantage? Which is, you know, if you, they were trying to enable this trail. They weren't trying to say that every, every bit of this trail, the land, was dedicated for open space. They were trying to enable the trail, and they did. And, you know, to come back, and it was, you know, different, nobody, in fact, I would say, nobody in this room was there. I was there when they did it, but, you know, and then, coming back and try and interpret from minutes that they didn't mean what they said they meant, which is to enhance the trail and open space network, rather than to dedicate this to open space. It's a subtle difference, but it's a difference. Now, I would, you know, on this little section right up here, Peter makes a good point, and I'm willing to withdraw that little, that little piece off the end, because that was part of a, of a, you know, the grant for open space acquisition. But the rest of it is a valid proposal that should be considered on its merits, not on this legalistic interpretation that it's illegal.
Any objections to the determination of the Alcorta property as open space?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Russell.
You have the floor.
Mr. Russell?
Yes?
Counselor Madison?
In your interpretation of the town... Um, in your interpretation of the town code... One of the things in... When we went through the land use code, I mean, it was a painful process for the council. We did a lot of work on that. But I distinctly remember that our attorney, who's not here, made sure that we understood distinctions between what goes before the word "not." May not...
Yes.
Would not are flexible statements in our code. But the word "shall" is relatively inflexible. It really means "shall," not. So was that part of the consideration that you had in your interpretation of this portion of our code, Section 48-22?
Yes. My interpretation of the code is, if in fact, the minutes and the resolutions are evidence for the classification of these particular properties, then the word "shall" applies because that's the code, the purchase and exchange in uptown properties. So yes, that absolutely was in my mind when I wrote that definition. If on the other hand, it's the... Or the ruling of the council that the minutes and the resolution and the grant funding don't formally establish that that property is open space, then it doesn't apply. There's one last issue I guess I should mention. Jim, if you could go to the last slide. This is the Rio Vicente subdivision and the properties that are outlined in purple there were properties that were identified for the town as designation for park. When the Rio Vicente subdivision was formally planted, there were a lot of town issues that hadn't been addressed. The town had a lot of trouble with the developers of the Rio Vicente. It went through a lot of different phases about whether it was gonna be developed or wasn't gonna be developed and how much was gonna be developed. And there was finally a development agreement that was established in, I think, 1998, in which the town identified this as property that they would be quite interested in seeing as a park. I just mention it because if you would go back to the previous slide... Jim, can you... Yeah? The second one? Yeah, that one. That's all of this area up here. Now, it gets complicated because the Rio Vicente Development Agreement was never executed. The bank, when it acquired the subdivision through foreclosure, made this donation instead, or made that donation. I don't know exactly what the nature of the lots that are outside the town, the First New Mexico Bank donation would be, but my only point is that the town has expressed an interest in that area. It's a high knoll. It has quite a beautiful view looking down into the creek and might be certainly the park that's right here, have benefit to the town when that area develops. So there is some history here and I'm not trying to make any kind of statements or assertions about this property over here, other than to say that that town has for a long time expressed an interest as a park and then as receiving it for specifically open space and of course, the encroachment over onto the Alcortes is open space as well.
So if we had got to the point of discussing whether this was a good idea or not, I had actually addressed some of those issues. I do think that this is a knoll right here with a beautiful view. That's why I wanted it as a building site, but it would also make a great park right here. And the same thing right here. This would make a very nice park. And I was actually going to propose that we could make some arrangements for a park there. But we can't do that if you won't do any of these other... If any of these other swaps, I'm, you know, if you don't even... If you can't make any of these other swaps, then whatever arrangements you made with Rio Vicente, they're dead. They don't apply to me. I never knew this until tonight. I bought... That was not transferred to me as any part of any proposal when I brought this, bought this land. And, you know, if you wanna park here, we can work on that. But not if you're gonna declare that this whole thing is illegal, you know, that you can't adjust the boundaries, you know. There's not gonna... There's not gonna be a park in any part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe my question's gonna be to Peter Russell and it's gonna... And please indulge me and I'm gonna have to set up this question with a little background. I am troubled with the facts that were presented in regards to the donation of the land. And... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is it? All right. I'll try to speak up. On this resolution that we have here, what we're really resolving is the part that, to be resolved. That is what we've resolved, is what we list there. Generally speaking, that really covers the title, which was there just to give the public the intent of what was being done. In this case, what it says be it resolved, does not cover that title. So I think we might have a problem there that may be better suited for legal counsel to address, but we'll get to that in just a second. But also, when I look at that, I also fall back, well, a motion is very important. And if the motion actually read the title, then I think we'd be covered. Unfortunately, the minutes just say, "Resolution number was approved..." It was moved to approve. It doesn't read anything. So I don't know if the motion specifically said the title. The motion could have simply said "therefore." I'm not sure. So in, you know, we all... I've always been guilty of not dotting i's or crossing t's. There's not anything against the quality of any of these individuals that were a party to this, but I don't see any minutes that give a specific motion that designates this property as open space. And the "therefore," clearly, the actual part that we resolved, that is resolved, does not clearly designate the open space. We simply have a title that illustrates an intent and we also have discussion that was there to motivate a motion, but I don't necessarily see a motion or a resolution that truly designates this. As counsel or in your discussions with counsel and everything, you're satisfied that it does?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yes, I'm satisfied that the minutes, the resolution, the nature of the donation itself... Now, I don't know whether the bank took a tax benefit for making such a donation, but if they did, there's some issues there, of course. There's obviously an element of interpretation here. It's my interpretation that the intent of the donation, the purpose of receiving it, was to create trails and open space. If you just need something for the trails, a corridor 25 feet wide or 50 feet wide is perfectly adequate. But you wanna buffer the corridor so that you're not adjacent to residences or other types of development, so typically there's an open space corridor that surrounds it. As I mentioned earlier, we do have an open space designation in the code that has not been applied on the ground. The number of designations that were established in the land use code that are only now coming into play, for instance, the Historic Downtown District. But because of the way these two properties were acquired, it's my interpretation that they are, in fact, open space. And I would apply that to the Boston Hill acquisition as well. Although, when that happened, there was no Trails and Open Space Plan. It was just sort of a citizens' venture to, you know, try and improve the town. The specifics of the sales, some of you may recall, developed when actually a neighbor to this property over there proposed acquiring it and one of the counselors came forward and actually said, "Gee, let's sell this to him." And there was quite a bit of opposition from the community that, well, gee, that property was acquired for open space, although there was no such formal designation. And it was that reason, that particular sale proposal, that generated the whole ordinance that restricts the sale and lease of town property and limit the categories of the property that could be considered.
One more question, Mr. Mayor. Let's say it's still a... I think it's a little bit of a debatable... It's a hard one. It's a hard one to determine. Like I said, I do believe that there may be some issues there. Is there other specific ways of dedicating open space other than by this resolution? Or is they... Are they generally always by resolution?
Well, there wasn't at that time. The new means to do it would be to designate it with the zoning category and then it's clear. But at that time, there wasn't.
And we haven't utilized that yet?
Now, I would imagine that if you wanted to, in fact, engage in, you know, these transactions, you could affirmatively declare that this is not open space and that then you can swap it out. The danger is the precedent that it establishes for future councils, say on Boston Hill or, you know, other areas.
Could I comment on that?
Yes. Go ahead, Bruce.
I agree that it's a very bad precedent, but it's actually a bad precedent the other way, to say that you can't swap land that you don't need for land that you do need. And it's not the way, as I pointed out, it's not the way Boston Hill was done. And so, to say that some council, especially through a vague thing like this, a resolution that wasn't clear, that that's forever and ever and that no future council can reassess this. Now, if you had any question about it, you could decide what you wanted to swap and you could declare the areas that you wanted to swap, which, you know, there are two definitions of open space. One is, space... Open space is what has been declared to be open space. But in real life, open space is open space that's accessible and usable and accessible to the public. Now, in this case, in each of these cases, I point myself, you know, if I put a house on a setback right here, and houses along these setbacks, and there's a steep slope here and a lot of stuff, then this will be public open space that is actually somebody's private backyard. It will own... Nobody's gonna go into that area because it's right next to somebody's house, in the back of their house. And you can't see it from the trail. The purpose of this was to get the trail and to have, and as Peter says, a buffer, but there is a buffer. There is, in fact, the areas that I'm talking about, they're not open space or they're not gonna be open space when this area is developed. And if you have any legal questions, it would be easy for you to just say, declare that those spaces are not, that you want to swap are not open space and that... Then you could make the exchanges. And, you know, if you don't make the exchanges, what are you gonna do about land, about your trail that crosses over into private area? What are the consequences of that? What are the legal consequences, as well as the practical, of having your trail on private property?
Counselor, did you need to respond?
Yes. I asked Mr. Coats to go with Mr. McKinney to look at the encroachments and, of course, we've not been presented with any documents that show that there's an encroachment, but accepting the idea that there is an encroachment, Mr. McKinney, I mean, Mr. Coats thought that it could be remedied in half a day's work. Is that correct, Mr. Coats?
It's certainly in half a day. It could be done.
How quickly it could be done?
So the second part is that... So the encroachments are minor and easily remedied. I don't think there's an impediment to the trail itself.
I think the encroachments is what's on the ground now.
Statements about it, any of it, the trail's in jeopardy, in many more words, is really irrelevant to the issue at hand, is...
The other issue I'd just like to briefly address is, because I was involved in the Boston Hill acquisition. And what happened with the Boston Hill acquisition is there were two separate parcels. There was the Boston Hill parcel and then there was this parcel over here. I was working with the Citizens Group at the time and the group approached the town and asked them to acquire Boston Hill using the Lenny Morrell Ford donation. What happened is that this parcel was not part of what the group approached the town to acquire, but it was also owned by the same company from New Jersey that owned Boston Hill. And Rebecca Smith took it as a salary for having negotiated the deal, but it was never part of the swap or the in and out of what the Citizens Group advocated or what the town was considering.
Did the town ever own that piece of property?
No.
Thanks.
Yes.
Come on. You might as well stay there, Bruce.
That's the old dump. A part of that is the dump and that's why, from what I understand, the town hasn't purchased it, which I think the town should purchase it. But, you know, I believe that the town did own that 50 years ago. Rebecca Smith told me that story about how when she was a little girl, she went there with her family and they didn't go to the landfill. There wasn't any landfill, there was a dump. And it was there and further to the east. So I hope the town was dumping on its own property and not dumping on someone else's property, but I believe that part of that did belong to the town at one point.
Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a note about minutes. In examining minutes, I feel there are record of the meeting that occurred and there are legal record of what occurred. And... And under the new business of the Resolution 2005-11 minutes, it specifically states that councillor Foss made a motion to adopt Resolution 2005-11 and accept the donation of land from First and Mexico Bank of Silver City, as indicated on the survey presented to the council at the meeting. And that's referencing the actual resolution title, because the title states that some donation of property from First and Mexico Bank of Silver City to the Town of Silver City for the purpose of enhancing open space network. I think that while there may not be exact phrasing as we do now in our minutes where the entire title of the resolution is rewritten in our minutes as they are now, this is really a comparison between different sets of minutes and how minutes have evolved over time, but I think it's a, I mean, I would presume to think that the council didn't read the entire resolution under consideration since it's on the agenda, which is also a legal document and record of proceedings of that council meeting. So, to me, it's, we take the agenda and the minutes and the resolution title together. To me, you know, that's what was done at the council meeting, and that's what was under consideration, not only for the councillors to look at, but also for the public to understand. Because, yes, while I agree that the information under the now, therefore be it resolved, only lists tracts of land and very, you know, legalistic things, there has to be wording that indicates to the public and to the councillors exactly what's under consideration, which is the preface in the title. So, I'm a little bit, I lean more towards taking the resolution and the preface and the title in its entirety to give indication to everyone concerned what it is that we're doing as a council. Thank you.
Bruce, if...
I'm sorry. Can I move for a short break? Please. I move for a short break.
Do you have a second? One second, good. There's a motion and second for a short recess. All those in favor, signify, if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, will be in a second.
Call this meeting back to order. Mr. McKinney, I have a couple of things for you. Looking at the minutes of December 14, 2004, when you go down to that item and you look at how it was published, you make a point on the enhancing is the key word, but then when you go to the actual resolution, which was 2004-40, I want to read two of the wherestes. Whereas, the council of the Town of Silver City passed Resolution 2002-07 on February 26, 2002, adopting a Trails and Open Spaces Plan as a guide to implementing and creating a Trails and Open Spaces Network in Silver City and surrounding area. And whereas, the subject property meets the criteria for the establishment and protection of trails and open spaces outlined in the plan and helps to achieve one of the plan's recommended projects. And before you respond, Bruce, let me, let me see if I can get some from Peter. Do you know if the, if that portion of the code changed? When we did the sale of town land, did we, when we did that ordinance, did we increase the restrictions in that area?
When you did the ordinance in 2000, early 2006, I believe it was, it made the sale of land more rigorously reviewed and establish categories of land that should not be sold. I don't believe that the kind of restrictions that were in code prior to the 2006 ordinance were as restrictive or specifically prohibited the sale of any category of land. That, I could be mistaken, and I would be happy to research it for you. But I believe that the 2006 is more rigorous than what went before.
Thank you. So, here's my concern. Knowing that this resolution is out on the books, with the intent of the council as to providing establishing and protection of trails and open space, and that this property, the First and Mexico Bank donation, needed protection, how do you respond that it doesn't fit under open spaces when both of these justifications for the resolution state that it is?
Well, you know, I believe that both of the resolutions say that have the same word. Is that correct? That for the purpose of enhancing the town's Trails and Open Space Network. Now, a normal reading of that is that enhancing that a network could include purchasing land to trade for better land. That enhancing, it doesn't say that it's to become a part of the trails, of the open space, it's to enhance the trails and the open space network. And in fact, it did, this donation did enhance the trails. I mean, the trail wouldn't exist without it. But to say that this means that every, every, I mean, to carry it to an extreme, if I were to say, I'll give you 10 acres for this one quarter of an acre here, and this is really good open space with a great view, and this thing, this quarter acre that I'm trading for is not someplace anybody would ever go, and it's not visible, it's not accessible except through somebody else's property, and you're saying, no, we couldn't, we couldn't get better property for less useful property. That, I would say that being able to trade for better property is part of enhancing. That word enhancing is not the same as being open space, or being dedicated as open space.
You're addressing the title, but you're not addressing the whereas.
Oh, the whereas, which is...
It's the fourth whereas in 2004-40.
And are you saying that the later thing incorporates those whereas's? Is that your interpretation?
The whereas's are an expression of intent of the council in justifying why we're doing something.
Right, but...
So, it gives you a record in the future of, for future councils to understand why we did something. And that whereas is saying, the subject property, not that we want to use it later for some other sales or exchange. It specifically says, this property.
So you're talking about the whereas, the subject property meets the criteria for the establishment and protection of trails and open spaces outlined in the plan and helps to achieve one of the plan's recommended projects, which it does, which the recommended project was the trail. But the land that we're trying to swap, you know, this is a pretty legalistic interpretation. And furthermore, Resolution 2004-40 was never implemented. So, you know, this is, the whole thing is pretty legalistic to, you know, try and shoot yourself in the butt.
I may not like the law that's on the books right now. That's totally irrelevant to the issue. What is, what our job tonight is, is to interpret whether the law is legal one and whether that land meets open space criteria. If it meets open space criteria, then the law is clear, it cannot be sold. Do you agree?
I agree that if it meets, if it was, I would say that if it was dedicated at some point as open space, then it cannot be sold. I've never argued with that. I don't think that's a very wise policy, but again, it is the law. But my contention is that this was never, and, you know, I think if you went back and talked to the people that were involved in this, if you, if they heard this interpretation of what they did, they would say, what? They didn't really consider whether this was open space one way or the other. They were just trying to enable the trail, and they did.
They may have blindly voted on a resolution. I don't know. I can't tell you what was in their mind or how they considered their votes. I could tell you, they voted on a resolution that states the subject property meets the criteria for the establishment and protection of trails and open spaces. So, we can't debate whether they read their packet or not that night and understood it. We have to debate what they actually passed, which is the record of the town.
Well, we don't even know what they were going to adopt here, because I asked Jim for the map of what was being donated in the 2004-40, and he couldn't find it. And so, I know it was different than what you actually accepted, but I don't know what it was. I would say that Resolution 204-40 is irrelevant to anything because it was never implemented, the land was never purchased, and the land was purchased under 2005-11. And I asked for that map, and I would like to, I'd like to know what they did originally propose purchasing, but apparently, it's lost. There's no record of, it's different than what was actually purchased. I don't know whether this, I was very curious, and I asked to see that map.
Well, it can be recreated, I'm sure, because the legal description is in both resolutions. It's in 2004-40 and 2005-11, there's a legal description.
Yeah.
And in 2005-11, it states that they made the boundary modifications to the property to be donated so as to satisfy the above referenced conditions by eliminating the causes therefore, which means they got rid of the potentially contaminated land.
Well, I, but you notice there's a difference between 18.451 acres and 17.87 acres, and it's not clear exactly, you know, part of this land is very near the section that was different. But, you know, again, that's just legalisms that, you know, I still don't think that this resolution dedicates, either resolution dedicates that land as open space. And the whereas that you're citing, it's vague enough to, I don't, I wouldn't interpret it the way you interpret it, but I'm not the one making the decision.
How is it vague? I don't, that particular whereas does not seem vague to me at all.
Well, the subject property meets the criteria for the establishment and protection of trails and open spaces outlined in the plan and helps achieve one of the plan's recommended projects, which it does. But that's still, I don't see that as a dedication plan.
Can you see that it was the intent that it be used for trails and open spaces?
Yes, it would be, and trading it for better land would be included as part of that, I would think.
Which I believe...
The ordinance, the other point is that the ordinance that you're citing didn't even exist at that time. So, you know, how could they have an intent to, when there wasn't even an ordinance, they wouldn't have had, they didn't have an intent one way or the other. They, and there wasn't any ordinance saying that, so that they couldn't, that once they dedicated it, they couldn't change it. So, you know, Peter was saying that that ordinance was passed in 2006. And so, what was their intent at that time? And would it have been different if they had known that two years later, there would be an ordinance restricting that? I don't know.
But I think that misses the point. Establishment and protection, we don't know, none of us can quote what that meant in 2005. The fact that it was trails and open spaces is what this clearly says, which expresses an intent.
Well, I really don't think their intent was to lock this, every inch of this donation in forever, and, but, you know, maybe we've reached the end of trying to interpret what they intended, and you're the deciding body, and, but, again, I would say that if you wanted to make swaps that are to your advantage, and I haven't had the chance to respond to Peter and Jim's comments, and I think they're absolutely wrong, that it would be to your advantage, but that would, if you wanted to do that, you could undedicate the sections that you wanted in a separate action.
I don't debate that.
Okay.
I think, I mean, there's nothing written in stone. It obviously doesn't help your timeline if we were to come back at a later time and either change the ordinance or make specific dedications. It's going to most likely increase your frustration level, but...
Most likely. But let me suggest this. According to the procedure that you, which is different than what I was informed, but if I come back next month and I have a proposal to make the swaps, and I make my case for the swaps, and you decide whether you want to, if I can convince you that the swaps are in your advantage, then at that time, you could make a resolution, undedicating the parts of the swaps that you wanted to make, and then you could make a resolution saying you wanted to make the swaps. Isn't that, and you could decide at that time, based on the desirability of the swaps, whether you wanted to do them.
I think there is a process that could be followed, that could accomplish any of the objectives that we could dream up in our wildest imaginations. I don't think it's the one you just outlined. And I think part of that is, some of the problems are encountered with the resolutions that were passed in 2004 and '05. And especially when you go down, I mean, let's look at the next, the very next whereas in 440. In 2003, the legislature of the state of New Mexico passed the Land Conservation Incentives Act, which provides incentives to encourage the donation of open space lands to public to public entities. We may have to discover whether somebody received an incentive on that donation before we make that, they're accepting that incentive improper because they received it for open space. So I think we've got some research that we would have to do before we could accomplish the objective, but can they be done? I, I think they can.
Well, I've been through hell for four months, and I'm not sure I'm gonna come back. You may just be out of luck. That, you know, I think that, I can't believe that you don't want to get rid of that awful subdivision.
It doesn't matter if we want to or we don't want to. We're faced with the law that's on the books today. And we have to use a legal interpretation of the law that's on the books today. It has absolutely no reflection on the council's opinion of the subdivision as it has stood for the last twenty-eight years, or the desire to dispose of it, or the support of the proposals that you have put forward. We're, we're in a box as well that-
Well, go ahead. I guess I don't think you're in a box, but if you think you're in a box, then that's all that matters, and we can, you know, why don't you go ahead and do what you have to do?
Well, I think we're in a box. We may find out we're not here in a minute when the council votes. Is there any other questions for any of the witnesses? Is there any closing statements, Mr. Russell?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any closing statements, other than to reassert that my interpretation is based on the resolutions in the minutes and a little bit of the history of this. I would like to point out that it is confusing, and I take Councilor Bedison's point really to heart, that the idea of open space has evolved over time. Initially, you only heard trails and open space as a single category. It seems like that's beginning to separate a little bit. But in terms of interpreting the application of the land sale and exchange ordinance to these particular properties, my interpretation is that the shall not be exchanged is the ruling thought.
Thank you. Any closing statements, Mr. McKinney? Thank you. Is the council prepared to render a decision? Remind you that you have, there's two areas. One is whether the law, which is forty-eight, whatever it is, dash twenty-two B is a legal law, and the second decision is to uphold or decline Mr. Russell's decision. Interpretation, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Trying to figure out how to phrase this first statement, so any assistance would be accepted for the phrasing of that first part of the motion. I move that forty-eight dash twenty-two B is a legal law or a legal ordinance. What is the best?
You can move that ordinance is within the powers of the town council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that forty-eight dash twenty-two B is within the powers of the town council. And I also move to uphold Mr. Russell's interpretation of forty-eight dash twenty-two B.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by the board? There's a motion and a second. That the code forty-eight dash twenty-two B is within the powers of the town council and uphold Mr. Russell's interpretation of said code. And we'll need a roll call.
Hi. Nay.
Hi.
Councilor Maron.
Nay.
There's a tie, which means I get to vote, and I'll vote aye. Aye for the motion. The motion carries. And that concludes this hearing. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number two thousand twelve thirty authorizing the execution and delivery of a colonius infrastructure project fund grant agreement. Mr. Russell.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is something that Alex Brown asked me to present. As you know, he's not able to be here this evening. The resolution is specifically supporting a regional water support system that the town has been working on with the other municipalities of Grant County. Involves a well field in the vicinity of the Grant County Airport and a transmission line that links Hurley, Baird, Santa Clara, and Silver City together. Specifically, this resolution is to support the development of a preliminary engineering report to analyze how that transmission line might be constructed, what kind of storage tanks might be involved, and what kind of rights of way might need to be acquired. This is being funded through the colonias program. It was actually awarded some time back what the NMFA, the New Mexico Finance Authority, now manages these programs. It's new for the NMFA. This is their first year of awards. And of course, as you may be familiar, there was an audit at NMFA that delayed some of their projects. The resolution specifically authorizes a project, which is the preliminary engineering report for the regional water system that I mentioned a little bit earlier. The project is funded for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and ninety-nine dollars. It includes all of the municipalities of Grant County. It does not include Hanover and the Venadium area. They made a separate application and were awarded as well, and these two applications will be merged and addressed together. The town was designated the fiscal agent for this, but it's for the benefit of all of the other colonias communities in Grant County. This evolved under the auspices of the Grant County Water Commission, where these rules or roles and responsibilities were discussed. The grant specifically provides or requires a ten percent match, which will be funded through work that Blue Groundwater has already done, modeling water and groundwater in the area, and the development of the test well at the Grant County Airport. It will include also some staff time working on the PER and potentially the return, the recharge water credits that the town seeking from water released by the waste water treatment plant. That's about seven hundred and fifty acre feet of return flow that the town will be seeking to acquire. There's no out-of-pocket expenses required for matching this grant. The town attorney has reviewed this project and has seen no problems with it. The town, and Mr. Brown specifically, will be meeting with NMFA January third, two thousand thirteen, to discuss the project. There are some specific forms of recording the resolution that the clerk can work with you on in terms of who's present and how the council voted. I'll be happy to answer any questions I can about this, if you have any.
Any questions? Just comment that Hurley really has the urgency that we proceed with this project. We've all read the articles that they're, they own no water rights at this point, and they have a deadline to find a new source. And working through the Water Commission, and we've gotten to this point where we can take another step closer to completing the regional system as well as resolving Hurley's dire situation. There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Sorry. I move to approve resolution number two thousand twelve dash thirty authorizing the execution and delivery of a colonias infrastructure project fund grant agreement.
Mr. Mayor, second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number two thousand twelve thirty authorizing the execution and delivery of a colonias infrastructure project fund grant agreement. Roll call, please.
Hi. Hi. Councilor Maron.
Hi.
Councilor Maron.
Hi.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of bid number twelve thirteen seven home rehabilitation project. Anita.
Mr. Counsel, one's recommendation for the top thirteen asset, home rehabilitation project, is staff recommendation to award the project to Fiesta Homes for a base bid of sixty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars, fifty cents. Grocery seats tax of four thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and eleven cents for a grand total of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve bid twelve thirteen seven, test home rehabilitation project with, with the bid, by staff recommendation, Fiesta Homes, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents with the TRTs.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? This does meet the ten percent. There's a motion and a second, no further discussion, to approve bid number twelve thirteen seven for home rehabilitation project, staff recommendation to Fiesta Homes for sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents, which includes the GRT. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is appointment to the mayor's climate protection agreement citizens advisory committee. I did. Oh, I did PNZ. Oops, and now I gotta go back. I marked it out. Here we go. The next item on the agenda is appointment to the planning and zoning commission. We have two applicants and two openings, and at this point, I'm prepared to present one of them for reappointment, is Sherry Ann Clements. If there's no objection, she's appointed.
No objection.
Hearing no objection, she's duly appointed. The next item on the agenda is appointment to the mayor's climate protection agreement citizens advisory committee. We have an application from Christopher Aquino. The chair has reviewed the application and recommends appointment, and I find that he is qualified and would recommend him for appointment if there's no objection.
No objection.
Hearing no objection, Mr. Aquino is appointed. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval to cancel or reschedule the regular town council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. And speaking with the town manager who's checked our bids and stuff, there would be no urgent need for us to meet on Christmas Day or in the near vicinity. So I would propose to entertain a motion that we cancel the meeting for December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. Our next meeting will be next calendar year.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move to cancel regular town council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to cancel the regular meeting of the town council for Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. If we need to, we can schedule an emergency or special meeting. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.